First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Council will consider approval of the minutes for June 3rd, 6:30 PM, regular and closed session.
Move approval, second.
Motion by Councilmember Aldrich, second by Councilmember Townsend for the discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we'll move into the public hearings. I have two public hearings tonight. Rules on a public hearing. Staff will make the presentation and then up to 10 people that are for and 10 people that are against will be given three minutes each to speak and we'll move forward after that with council discussion. Mr. Robinson, if you will, start your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Guess we're on it. So this is for... Text Amendment 24-03, proposed text amendment. This came about really over some time. There's been several ordinance sections that have been suggested, changes by staff as well as planning board and residents and possibly even some by council has been mentioned. Primarily related to issues we've encountered with new development, ways to improve development in the city. And this was initiated by the Planning Board Committee with the intent to review planting lists and explore the expanded use of vegetative buffers in subdivisions as well as sidewalks. It was considered and recommended for approval by Planning Board in April. And it covers six different sections for... Because of length, I've moved, these would be in chronological order in the ordinance except for City Lake Environments Overlay, which I've moved to the end, provide a little more time on that. These are... Some of these are very short in nature, some of them are a little bit longer. 9110, minimum design standards that addresses lot shapes, including flag lots. 92.121, buffer yard requirements, requiring buffer yards in larger subdivisions. 92.122, landscaping and paving of lots and streets, requires that streets... Street trees be required on new residential streets. We also edited the planting list there. 92.123, sidewalk and pedestrian amenities, sidewalks required on both sides of residential streets. 92.125, which would be a new section, structures on underdeveloped lots, standards for improvements on paper lots and streets. And 92.111, the City Lake Special Environments Overlay, which is a zoning overlay to address development concerns in and around City Lake. Start off with 9210, minimum design standards. This encourages orderly development with semi-regular shaped lots, prevents stacking of multiple flag lots and limits flag lots to two on subdivisions of less than 10 or 10% once you get more than 10 lots with no more than 200-foot-long flag poles. Also requires larger flag lots capable of being subdivided in the future, those would be two acres or more, or those that have flag poles longer than 200 feet to have wider street access, wider access at the street, wider flag poles so that you can potentially put in new streets in the future. It also allows buffer yards of 50 feet to count as passive open space. That's really related to one of the next sections, but it was placed into this section because it was more, there was already a portion about that. This is the minimum design standards. As you can see here, this would limit subdivision of 10 lots like this to having two flag lots there. You couldn't have a whole bunch there and you couldn't have multiple back behind it. And then here, if you've got a lot that would be larger than two acres where you could potentially see subdivision in the future or access to other parcels in the future, would require that be 60 feet in width so that that, a future street could be placed there. 92.121, buffer yard requirements. This adds 25-foot exterior vegetative buffer yards for developments of more than five acres or 20 lots to citywide buffer yard requirements. Currently, we have buffer yard requirements between most of our, most all of our developments except for single-family residential. So this adds that to that, but it is restricted just to larger subdivisions of five acres or 20 lots. So if you have two or three lots, you know, you're doing a subdivision for minor subdivision, you would not be required to install buffers for that. Approximately 75% of new developments already include buffers of this size, some of them even greater. Those are all largely voluntary. Most of those are clusters as well, but those are usually voluntary buffers that they install. So this won't have a significant impact. Already, most of our subdivisions are doing it. The section on that would be in the buffer yards table. We've included in red here, by the way, these are the links to the, not links, but the references to the actual document where you can look these up. 92.122, landscaping and paving of parking lots and streets. This adds street tree requirements for residential development on new streets with a 50-yard space, 50-foot spacing. Currently, non-residential does require this at 35-foot spacing. We do not require it for single-family residential. It specifies placement in the right-of-way and requires medium to large trees except when overhead utilities are present. Approximately 50% of new residential developments have planted or have included plans for street trees in them. So it is a relatively common thing that we have right now, but it's not something that we currently require. Updates, this also updates the approved planting list and lists prohibited invasive species. This really, a lot of these species we already had listed were included, but it does update that. I think that list was probably about 20 years old. This was taken from the NC State Agricultural Extension List. 92.123, sidewalks and pedestrian amenities. This requires sidewalks on both sides of the street and all residential development. Those are currently excluded from standard major subdivisions but required in clusters. So this is really just kind of closing that loophole on them. That's really one of the only areas where you would be, in the city where you would be exempted would be on a standard residential subdivision. It's kind of counterintuitive, so we've done something that Planning Board and staff have talked about doing for a while now. Approximately 75% of all residential development in the last five years has been clusters and has required sidewalks on both sides of the street already. So this is just kind of adding that. It's something that's commonplace at this point. 92.125, structures on underdeveloped lots. That is a term that we made up to describe these, but it defines properties adjacent to unopened or unpaved right-of-way as underdeveloped and needing improvements to meet code. This map here does show properties that are, it shows gravel drives in orange. You can see lots on unopened right-of-way in blue and then in purple there, I can't see it real well, but in purple, lots that aren't gravel streets. So you can see that we do have, they're scattered, but we do have quite a few of them, especially in certain sections of town. And this is kind of a zoom in to show you what we're dealing with right now. A lot of times, we will get questions for development of a home or subdivision of a property and sometimes there's barely even a gravel street out there in place. So this helps to address that and several other things there. This is the, kind of the south side of town. This would be more of the northwest side of town. Some example of some of our either unpaved or kind of unopened right-of-ways, I guess completely unopened and have trees on it, but where you see they vary from just kind of grass to dirt to gravel. One of the things I would stress with this is that we also get a lot of requests from people for the city to pave these. And we would like to eventually go back and look at our assessment project, our assessment process in the future to provide a way forward with that. But at the same time, we would like to try to cap right now the number of those that will be coming up in the future. So we kind of address this where we're at right now. This would require entire frontage of lots to be paved to a minimum of 20 feet or to the width of adjacent streets with new construction. Right-of-way widths expanded when necessary. One-half length of the unpaved side street must be paved when adjacent lots to the side have no other access to the paved street. What this does is break up cost amongst lots or amongst property owners and encourages acquiring buildings on multiple, and building on multiple lots. Creation of additional lots or density requires full improving of all adjacent right-of-way and connecting to nearby streets. May require upgrades to existing street widths with increases to density and requires lots and parcels at the end of streets of unimproved right-of-way to offset building placement to allow for street extension in the future. What that does is it prevents blocking off of future streets by popping a house kind of right in the middle of where that right-of-way would be. And then this diagram, these are related back to the sections in the ordinance. You can actually go look at them and then pull it up in the ordinance. And the last section, 92111, City Lake Special Environments Overlay District. This is a new chapter that we've recommended. There's heavy interest in development in the surrounding area of City Lake in the last three years. We have had over a dozen meetings between City Council and Planning Board since 2021 on this. Area residents and park users express concerns about new development, including flooding, pollution, sedimentation, wildlife habitat, loss of tree cover, visual impacts to lake and surrounding properties as well as traffic. There's currently no way for the city to address concerns specific to this area without imposing them citywide. What's special about the lake? It's a former city drinking water supply and it also remains the largest body of water in the city and we believe also the largest in Stanley County. That is completely within the county. We weren't able to identify any others outside of Tillery and Baden. The city's largest park, City Lake Park, also borders the lake, provides recreational amenities on water and land for city and for also county residents and even those from further away. Views of the lake, the tree line, the aquatic habitat make the lake an important resource for city and provide, for the city and provide opportunities for birding, fishing, boating, hiking, disc golf and more. The lake and the lands immediately to the north and the south represent the largest collection of contiguous wetland in the city. The entirety of the lake and much of the land immediately adjacent to its shoreline is designated by FEMA as regularly flooding floodway or as 100-year floodplain. Many areas around the lake feature steep slopes, which would do little to contain stormwater once the land is exposed during the development process. Also, the Future Land Use Map designation from our 2028 Future Land Use Plan designates most of this area as parks, recreation and conservation areas. And these are areas where parks, recreation areas, greenways or conservation areas either exist or have been identified as possibilities in the future. Development considerations include the desirability of the land for recreation or conservation use, how the property fits into the future recreation plan of the city and the environmental impacts of developing the land. The goals related to this from the Future Land Use Plan in residential are to encourage well-planned residential development that will promote best interest of the residents and the community as a whole, to protect natural features such as steep slopes and stands of significant trees as part of Albemarle's future residential development. Commercial, to minimize the potential negative impacts of commercial development through high-quality building and site design and increased landscaping and buffering. And then on open space and preservation to protect the city's drinking water supply and environmentally sensitive areas. What are some of the issues that we see around City Lake? We've already seen some minor to moderate levels of clearing, loss of tree line around the lake, including additional runoff and loss of privacy between properties and developments. And that's both at the lake as well as on adjacent properties to the south and to the west where there's been clearing. You can definitely see some houses here and you can see the, definitely see the shorelines down here in these areas. Invasive species such as alligator weed are already present along the shoreline. This picture is actually from today when Parks and Rec was out there working to clear this out. That does require regular treatment by the city and it tends to be kind of worst around some of the cleared-out areas. Major flooding recorded and we've had at least four times since 2020 in and around the City Lake Drive, both from uphill properties and from the lake. Those are ones that I'm aware of, that I've seen evidence of. I'm sure the residents out there may know of others. City Lake Drive meets the minimum width of 20 feet in width, but it's 1.8 miles long with no other outlets. So from a transportation standpoint, and it's a, it's a little bit narrow, but we also have other city streets to the north that are narrower and are unpaved. A lot of these have capacity. There's not a lot of travel down them right now, but the network and then even kind of the widths on some of these streets, just really, they're not designed to carry traffic from multiple major developments. And also their safety concerns are heavy floods when some of these streets shut down. It's a long way to go to get out when you have to go a mile and a half to two miles, depending on where you're at. Ensuring future development around City Lake doesn't exacerbate the issues. What are some of the different methods that we can do as a city to do that? We could add citywide regulation through existing zoning. One of the items on there would be to implement the stormwater plan. We haven't done that yet. Also, we're not sure exactly if the items in the stormwater plan would be sufficient in every area, including City Lake. Other areas in the city are more suited for, for the permitted higher density and intensity that we currently allow, so restricting those may not be something we want to see. City Lake may require more aesthetic regulation than other parts of town. If it's a, if it's a, you know, true resource for the city, then we may want to provide a little bit extra to kind of protect that area. But this all leads to the fact that really does not need to be a one-size-fits-all regulation. We don't necessarily need to change everything in the rest of the city to address some of the issues specific to this area here. Some areas, some ways you could do that would be either through conditional zoning or development agreements. Development agreements, which we have done in the past, they're time-consuming and difficult and there are specific requirements by law. We know for sure that not, it would not be applicable to all properties due to size. Also, the conditional zoning district option would need to be created. Those are voluntary by property owners seeking the conditional use and they're also case by case and may not be applied consistently to all properties. So you got concerns there where if, you know, one year conditional zoning is applied to one property out here and then next year, two years later, three years later, we come back and do something different on the adjacent property there. Really kind of hard to have consistency out there that way. The other option, as we've recommended, create a zoning overlay district specific to the area of the city around City Lake Park. Little background on zoning overlay districts. How do they work? These are legally authorized, legally authorized form of zoning under 160D 382, which states that overlay districts in which additional requirements are imposed on certain properties within one or more underlying general or special use districts. So it's a function of zoning, but it's applied on top of existing zoning to a specified area and can include multiple underlying base zoning districts. I will specify this was made up. We do not have a overlay district going over 24/27 right now. This was done to show an example of a corridor overlay district that would be put in place with specific, it could be design regulations on commercial, potentially residential, but it overlays and you have specific uses underneath it. So we've got, you know, five, six different zoning districts that this would be on top of. It's applied consistently to all the properties within the overlay and it does not require piecemeal, potentially inconsistent enforcement. Greater, also provides greater predictability for property owners. They kind of know what to expect when they go to either be annexed or to develop their property, to subdivide their property, they know what the regulations are going to be on it. How does it work? It's legislative process created through City Council text amendment with the specific purpose, design, define boundaries and defined regulations or requirements. The overlay district addresses, overlay districts in general address several different aspects of the districts they are created for, and these include historic preservation, floodplain, groundwater, farmland, economic development, pedestrian connectivity, transportation, habitat protection, signage, many others. This is an old, this is from an old study that was done by the school government. It's actually in 2007 and I can tell you, I believe, from looking through what other cities have done, that there's quite a few more to be added on to this since that time. But currently 90, or at least at this point, 93% of cities our size from 10,000 to 25,000 use overlay districts as a zoning tool. Some of these are as floodplain or stormwater, which are mandated by the state, and others like downtown design standards can be recommended by state organizations such as the State Historic Preservation Office or Main Street. And then this shows some examples of different types, some of the most common types of overlay districts, flood hazard historic district, corridor protection, central business district, water supply, stormwater, other environmental, and then there's a kind of a catch-all for other and they are highly varied. In Albemarle, we really have, we've got two that you can find in the zoning district right, in our zoning ordinance right now, and then we actually have four when you really look at it. We have the downtown local district, local historic district, which is focused on aesthetics and historic preservation, includes three federally designated national districts as well as a larger undesignedated area of the central business district and the adjacent residential districts that ties everything together. And we have the northeast connector, which I believe was created around 20 years ago, maybe 15. And that is focused on aesthetics, traffic and landscaping and tree protection for properties that are adjacent to or otherwise within 200, 200 feet of the northeast connector. Then we have flood damage prevention, which has its own chapter, but it is regulated effectively like zoning by the planning department. And it is an overlay that is state-required, affects all properties within the federally designated floodplains and floodway, flood damage prevention, and then also the watershed, which is similar as well. And that's watershed properties within the Gadsden-Tiller watershed. Some other overlay districts, zoning overlay districts in North Carolina, there's quite a few. These three or four, we've listed at the top here are really some of the ones that are most similar to what we're trying to do. Raleigh-Heston-Metro Park District, which is focused around, an area around Umstead State Park, has tree preservation, buffers, lighting, and it also restricts development intensity, which would be your amount of land you could develop on your property. The Burke County Lake District, Habitat Preservation, Tree Preservation Buffer, Shoreline Preservation Aesthetics. Buncombe County has one for Blu-ray, the Blue Ridge Parkway District, which focuses on aesthetics, buffering and building height. And Garner has the Lake Benson Conservation District, water quality, density and intensity. But then you've got a bunch of different ones down here. Stanley County has the airport, the airport district. We've got gateways, transit supportive, transit supportive revitalization, freeway signage, scenic loop corridor, small-town character, industrial railroad. So it's a really, it's a wide-ranging tool that's utilized by cities. It's a process for approving overlay districts. Well, staff and planning board, an ordinance committee of planning board members reviewed text amendment TA 24-03 in late March. Some of those were items that were recommended by the committee and by planning board. There are others that we included in there since we're doing a large, a large text amendment. So those were reviewed and planning board heard or recommended approval of TA 24-03 with minor changes in April, on April 4th. Following that, staff advertised twice in the SNAP for May 6th, this May 6th meeting, consistent with text amendment, general statutes and city ordinance, was on April 23rd and April 30th. City Council heard and tabled the text amendment at its meeting one month ago on May 6th. Following that, because it was tabled, we were required to re-advertise in the SNAP anyway, but staff also took the opportunity, because there are properties, specific properties that are going to be potentially impacted by this, we figured we would go ahead and notify them as well. So we re-advertised the SNAP to run on June 4th and June 11th, and then we also posted signage and we mailed notice to all affected property owners as well as those within 100 feet on June 4th and 6th. Part of these letters, normally on our notification letters, we would just send out, if it was a rezoning or something like that, we would just send the properties being rezoned and we wouldn't provide a lot of other information on that. It would be just kind of a very basic letter. On this, we did include detailed impacts of the ordinance on each specific property within the overlay. So that included what the overlay would do, what it would not do, and then we also included specifics with some, some approximations of calculations on how it would affect their property individually. The city has exceeded due process requirement for adopting a text amendment creating an overlay district based on this. Here you can see the backside of that letter. And then this is, this is a map that shows the, it shows properties in blue that are the affected properties and properties in tan that are within 100 feet of those, similar to what we do with our rezoning process. Where is the City Lake Special Environments area? Well, it includes 46 properties inside the city limits, which are in the green. These are within 1,000 feet of the buffer inside the city, which is shown right here in the hashed red of City Lake Tax Parcel 22381, which is shown in the blue right here. 1,000 feet was chosen as a decent buffer, past most steep slopes and a consistent distance from the lake for all properties. Similar ordinances that are done, have been done across the state vary anywhere from 250 to up to 2,000 feet. Unless a property owner inside city limits but within 1,000 feet of the lake requested and was approved.
Do that again, because I heard you say inside, but I read outside.
Within 1,000 feet of the lake, property owner outside city limits, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, 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 no. I just, I wanted to make sure I heard what I was, okay, thank you.
Going through it a little bit quick, I apologize.
That's fine, thank you.
Unless the property owner outside city limits but within 1,000 feet of the lake requested and was approved for voluntary annexation into the city in the future, the city has no impact to properties outside of Albemarle city limits. And I would stress that. I know that there's a little bit confusion going around. We've talked with several residents out in the county about that, to ensure them that this does not affect them. The city has no zoning authority outside of its jurisdiction. The City Lake Special Environments Overlay, what it will do, the overlay will encourage new development, which limits stormwater and pollutant runoff and mitigates flooding into the lake streams, wetlands, streets and adjacent properties. Preserves shoreline along the lake, views on and around the lake and enhances privacy between neighborhoods. Minimizes mass grading and preserves woodlands and stands of trees and improves the existing street network and minimizes future traffic impacts on the existing streets. So really, this is not intended to discourage development. What it is designed to do is to understand that development in this area will occur in the future and try to ensure, place some additional realistic limitations on that, which will ensure that that development, it mitigates the negative aspects of development there on the surrounding area. What it will not impact, again, properties outside of the city limits. And we've actually changed several sections in there to clarify that. They did say that before, but we've added some extra words in there and verbiage just to make, make that very clear. Will not impact permitted uses in the underlying base zoning districts. That includes residential, commercial, industrial. I think there's five different districts, four or five different districts that are included, that are on properties included in this right now. They will be able to continue their uses there. That is, that does not change. They'll also be able to continue their existing development. This will grandfather existing structures and paved areas. They can continue to use those and if they need to be torn down or redeveloped, they can build back on those existing footprints or that existing area without impacting requirements of the overlay. Properties already approved for development in the city, as long as their vested rights remain valid. So if there was a subdivision or a development which had been approved and it lapsed, its approval lapsed at whatever, and it was not constructed at that point, then this would, this would kick in and they would be required to adhere to this section of the ordinance. And that's commonplace with all development and new ordinances. Really kind of the meat of what this does, the density and intensity of development. New residential development will be limited to two units per acre and 25% development of a site. That includes impervious structures and pavement and it's, that is exempted with the installation of 25-year stormwater BMPs. BMPs are retention ponds, intention ponds, swales, other things like that that would help to retain and filter stormwater coming off of your property. So if those BMPs are installed, then you would revert to the underlying zoning district, what it allows in terms of development. Without that, two units per acre. Similarly, on non-residential development, it's limited to 50% of the development of the site, impervious structures and pavement, which would be also be exempted with 25-year stormwater. stormwater BMPs put in place. We've included some diagrams here to help show this. Here on residential, you've got a couple, you've got an undeveloped residential lot, this would be approximately 25% of that, which would be kind of your buildable area. It wouldn't necessarily have to be right there, but that kind of shows you how much of it would be available. And you've got somewhere where you've got a, you've got a already developed residential lot. So the area around the house, the driveway, all that's taken out. That's not included in your calculation. The calculation includes everything that's left that's not developed. It's 25% of all of the rest of that. And this is similar to how we do our, we use our watershed ordinance right now as well. If something was built pre-1990, when the ordinance came out, whatever was developed at that time is grandfathered, only the rest of the site is applicable. If a subdivided, a larger property wanted to be subdivided, this shows with the two units per acre maximum, and then this shows if they utilize a stormwater BMP, going back to the underlying base zoning district, where you could actually have a few more lots on The non-residential, very similar, just kind of shows development of a site, undeveloped site, one that's already developed, and then one that would utilize a stormwater BMP. Vegetative buffers, recommending to require a 100-foot width of wooded buffer to be preserved along the shoreline. On larger properties, five acres, up to 50-foot clearings may be made, and I would specify this has to be five acres, or it is, you know, on a large development, a kind of an open area where they might want a clearing or something like that. We have left an option for that in there. However, those must be separated and spread out by wooded areas, and no more than 25% of the total shoreline can be cleared. Also, developments of five acres or 20 lots must include a 50-foot wooded buffer around the exterior. Similar to other buffers that we allow in commercial, multifamily, elsewhere, industrial, if a section of the property's already been cleared and that wooded buffer is necessary, the option really is to plant it back, or if you have a property owner next door that has some woods on their lot, they would like to provide an easement for that, that can be done, and that is helpful at maintaining that buffer without having to require a lot of additional plantings. Also, since this is an increased width of wooded buffers, a significant width, we felt it necessary, or felt it good to go ahead and make, allow those to be counted towards passive open space requirements in a subdivision. Stormwater ponds must also be buffered from right-of-way and adjacent properties. Encroachment in sensitive areas, no grading or development on or within 100 feet of the shoreline of the lake, or within 25 feet of streams, wetlands, and floodplain. Mass grading and tree preservation, and this is no grading or tree removal to take place until a plan approved showing grading and preservation of trees and stands of trees not required for removal as part of the development. Streets and vehicular access, development should prioritize connecting streets adjacent properties on all sides, creating street patterns which emphasize vehicle access at areas away from the lake, and acquiring adjacent property for right-of-way and new streets when less than 20% of the total street length would be required for such. That's what I have. That's it in a nutshell. These are the six sections. Again, staff agrees with planning board. We do recommend that city council consider approval of the text amendment in its entirety. These are the sections available as well, and then we also would recommend a statement of consistency, which we have provided on the following page that we can go back to when y'all wish.
Council, have any questions of staff?
Just, just one question. On the overview sheet that was within our budget, within our agenda packet, and you made the comment right here, this particular ordinance, which includes text amendment 2403, has six different chapters included.
Yes, that's correct.
And within the over, within the budget, I mean, within our agenda, it basically says we can vote for it in whole or in part of the proposed amendment.
If that's council's wish, yeah.
If that's council's wish. And mayor, I just, I think probably if, for the next part during the public hearing, if they could, if anybody's for or against, if they could really talk about which one of these they're looking at, because this part has six chapters in it. I mean, I'm sure most folks are dealing with one chapter, but if they're not, I would like to know which one they're wanting to talk about.
We're going to move into our public hearing, allowing different people to come up and speak. As I stated before, each of you will have three minutes. There will be up to 10 speakers for and 10 speakers against. If I call your name and you've decided you do not wish to speak, please tell me that, and I'll move to the next person. I'm going to go down the list as signed up tonight. First is Boyd Stanley, 500 South Cannon Boulevard, Conaples.
Good evening, Mayor Michael, members of council, Mr. Rhodes. Boyd Stanley, you guys have seen me here before. I'd like to submit for the record a list of questions for the petitioner for these text amendments, most specifically the City Lake Special Environments, and in this case, the petitioner is staff, so I'd like to give all members of council a copy of that. And I would also like to point out, there are actually 76 changes. I hope the council's read all the changes to the UDO. If you count them, there's actually 76 changes. It's a lot of information when you look it up. And then what I'll also do, since I'm probably not going to get through my list in three minutes, I'm going to try to, I've got a copy of that as well. I don't have as many copies for the council, but I'm going to dive right into those. And I would like to point out, the statement that is consistent with the land use plan, there are properties that are affected that are outside of that conservation area that are zoned, that are designated for higher-density residential and moderate-density residential that are not part of that conservation designation. So I would submit that it's not consistent with the land use plan, the current land use plan that's adopted. Moving right along, my main points here, request that the Albemarle City Council contend, continue the proposed adoption of City Lake Special Environments overlay district indefinitely, that the proposed overlay district is an imminent domain action without just compensation to affected property owners, which can, which will devalue those areas up to 50%. And then there's some more notes at the bottom on 160D that defines overlay districts, that's same as conditional district, rezonings, watershed overlay districts, which this is not, as it was pointed out, Baden Lake and Lake Tillery are. And, you know, I'm going to try to get through my list in the next minute here. Under number one, asking to continue it, the city does not have jurisdiction over the water body, excuse me, that is, it's designated to stream on the USGS maps, it is designated on the wetlands maps, but the city has stream buffers already adopted in the UDO that it should follow, and, and the city, the city does have jurisdiction over the park, which it can overlay, and as the planning director pointed out, the city has no active stormwater management plan in place. The city is proposing to create a de facto conservation easement, imminent domain action without just the compensation to adjoining property owners, already pointed that out. And I've pointed out that it does not meet the comp plan or future land use map, and devalues the properties by 50%. Will taxes be reduced on these properties? I'm not sure that's been proposed. And the proposed imminent domain action is a weaponization of zoning laws on a water body. The city has no jurisdiction over, that would be the jurisdiction of the core engineers and NCDQ. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I submit these to the clerk?
Yeah, give them to the clerk, she'll pass them out to us. Michael Green, 32084 Pennington Road, Albemarle.
Thank you, mayor. I'm here on behalf of myself and two of my neighbors, Jamie Carrick and Andy Frick. I have about five and a half acres. The 1,000-feet proposal comes across my property, it affects Jamie Carrick, he has about 40 acres, and Andy Frick has approximately 100 acres there on the north end. Our concern, or our concern is basically that the total zoning area that you're looking at, even though we're outside the county, is about 250 acres. The total land there, just outside the county that the people own, is about 350 acres. If you pass this, 70% of those people will not, you will have the authority over what they can and can't do with their own property. Most of it's wooded area, and just as, for instance, we all understand, we're all trying to be good stewards of our land, environmentally, we understand that. But 1,000 feet of waterfrontage along the lake and 1,000 feet deep, that's 25 acres of land. So if a man's got 100 acres, I mean, 50 acres of land, you've taken half of it. Also, the regulation says no agriculture and forestry are prohibited. Andy Frick is in the timber business. Jamie Carrick, he's in the, he has a family farm there. So that's our concerns. The other part of that is, is we feel like it's just, even though you put it around the, in the, in the city, you're going to adopt it for the county, once you adopt it in the county, at some point, the city can take that over, and then there we're going to be. Like I said, we're just, we want to be able to use our property and be good stewards, but we don't want to have any regulations, because nothing against city council, like all you folks, but I live in the county. If I don't like something you do, I can't vote you out. I can't do anything. I have no representation, and that's the way we feel. We're just concerned that this is something that we're just against it. Thank you.
Before you leave, what's your last name again?
Green.
That's what I thought, I didn't hear that.
Yes, ma'am.
And what is your address again?
I live at 32084 Pennington Road, and that's where Jamie Carrick, he's my neighbor on Pennington Road as well, and Andy Frick's property's on Pennington Road.
Thank you.
We're on the, we're on the far north end of the, of the district, provided they do that. I think you have 30 seconds left. One other thing, our concern is the fact that, once I noticed in some cities, once they overlay this, and I think you talked about it, you can come in there and they have the greenways or pathways, we're not particular, partial to that either. I mean, we like to, we take care of our property, try to do what we can. I can only speak for ourselves, can't speak for the ones inside the city. So thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Christina Strickly, 601 East John Street Matthews.
Hi, I'm Strickly here as a representative of North Carolina City Watch. I collected some letters from landowners, the text amendment, or some, sorry, section 92111 of your text amendment would affect, that were opposed to it, and I would like to give them to you.
Give them to the city clerk over here.
Thank you very much.
Marla Chavis, 31756 Ameron Circle.
Hello, mayor and council. Well, I'm Marla Chavis, and I live at 31756 Ameron Circle. I am a county resident, and I guess what disturbs me is this nice little flyer or postcard that we all received in the mail. Someone went through a lot of effort, and, you know, like the ownership, I reached out to Kevin and asked, you know, where did all this transpire? You know, like, why are we at this point? Then I come tonight, and the City Watch lady's outside, and I ask her a few questions, but it's like, who are these people? Who did this? And this person, I guess, is post office about 30, 35 Matthews. I don't know if they're here, I'd like to meet them. But again, I'm in the county, I do join the shoreline of west of the City Lake, and I do know that years ago, when before the City Lake was even dredged out and put as far as the park, you know, the North Carolina Natural Resource has the whole north side of the lake, which is already protected for natural resource and so forth. You know, my questions are, you know, my dad always said, truth comes out, and this is a little like misconstrued, because, you know, nowhere did I receive a public hearing. I would not have, because I'm a county resident. I know Kevin says that, you know, the properties there would not, or that all the properties outside would not be affected, however, the gentleman that just spoke, it would be, again, if the city adopts it, and then therefore, you know, the county commissioners. County commissioners know nothing when you ask them. So I guess my question here is, let's just own this, like, who and how this came about? You know, like, who sparked this? I mean, they went through a lot of effort to mail this to me, but no one can take ownership. The city says, no, it was not them, it was not you guys. So who is it? You know, we don't do business in shadows, we do business out, and we do business honestly. And yes, we have a lot invested in the City Lake, but again, who's the developer? What piece of property are we really talking about? And who is behind this? You guys aren't.
Marla, go back to the mic for me, please.
You guys aren't. So somebody, I just want to know who's taking ownership of all this? Because again, the way that we do business, we're all open-minded, and we all support each other. So, you know, and as far as the beautification and environmental, yes, it is on the registry. Yes, it is under the natural resource. So I just want to know who's taking ownership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Hinton, 40302 Mountain Creek Road. Bob Baker, 35781 City Lake Drive.
Good evening, city council. My name's Bob Baker, and I'm here representing Lakeview Incorporated, also known as Stanley County Shrine Club. Lakeview is the holding company that owns the property that we have. We have 20-plus acres, and the majority of it actually touches the water of the lake. Until last week, it's the first we've heard of any of this, which is somewhat disturbing to us. We have over 75 members in the club, and until last week was the first time we saw anything regarding to this proposed environmental overlay district. I learned a lot from the presentation prior to the public hearing part of it, a lot of things I didn't know, things like the 50-foot wooded area buffer. The majority of our property is grass right up to the water. I mean, three-quarters of it is grass. There is no wooded area. 1,000 feet is three football fields, end to end. It would engulf every building we have on our property, and go beyond it, almost all the way to City Lake Drive. We're totally opposed to anybody being able to restrict us from doing anything we want on our property. We use it for recreational purposes, there's not going to be any developments. We've owned it since the early 1940s. If the Shrine Club dissolves, it then goes to the Shrine Hospitals for children. We're just totally opposed to any restriction to what we could do with our property. We've had it for practically ever. There's not going to be any more development. There's two structures on it, that's going to be the extent of it. I understand about wanting to protect the environment and so forth and so on, but I don't think this needs to be done for that to happen. The entire other side already belongs to the city. I mean, we're directly across from the City Lake Park. In fact, we can see almost all the park property of the lake, and we're the only other property that has a pier into the lake, because it was grandfathered from so many years ago. That's why it's still there. That's why it's still there. We don't want somebody to come in and say they can take it away from us. We go out there and fish off of it and so forth, just like people do when they go to the park across the lake. We go out there and canoe. We do all those kind of things. But I just wanted to voice our dislike of this happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I real quick, just to address that, I just want to make sure there's no confusion. The red area you see right there is the one, red area on there is 1,000 feet from the lake. That, that, that is how those properties were selected as being in it. We're not, the only thing, the only thing along the shoreline there is 100 foot. It's not 1,000 feet. It's just, the red just designates which properties are in it. No. May not be a lot better. And again, if it's in the county, we cannot regulate that. This is 1,000 feet around the lake right here. This is how the green properties were selected. The area around the shoreline there is 100 feet that we have in there as being the protected shoreline. So, and again, if you're within there, if you're in the green, it's a percentage of your total properties. If you had 20 acres, you're probably going, you could develop up to 10 acres of that with buildings and other such, so it's pretty intense. These are all properties that are, it's grabbing all these properties going along here that are in green. That's it.
Rick, and I, you're going to have to help me with the last name. I can't read the writing.
DeAngelo.
DeAngelo, okay. 31732 Ameron Circle.
Yes.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. What I have to say is probably a little redundant because some of these questions have been addressed already, but I just like to read them anyway so we can get a, get a better feel as to some of the dispositions of our residents in the county. So my comment was, I'm inquiring on the origin of the overlay district proposition. The, the impetus for the formation and specifically, what is the need to necessitate such action? I also would like to know, on a sidebar question, what authority does the city of Abmaral have, if any, over the county of Stanley? So, and in addition, maybe an impact statement as to any effects if, and I'm assuming that as the screen indicates, nothing beyond the city limits. And how would we, as residents, I'm, I'm in, I'm in the Ameron Circle Development, how are we assured that going down the road, once this, this proposition is accepted by the city, there won't be a tendency for the county to jump on board so in the future, us being impacted as well?
Are you, you finished?
I'm finished.
I cannot speak for the county. We don't know what the county may do. The city can only control what's in the city. So I can't speak for what the county could do in the future.
But I'm saying, their, their disposition may alter once this proposition, if, if passed, is in place. So there may be a stronger propensity for them to take action against us and our little neighborhood. I understand that. It's just that, something that I want to say that is extrapolate into the future where we may be going with this and not necessarily what that says today. So it could impact us as a result in the future, even though supposedly without, without a specific impact statement for our neighborhood, extrapolating future, it could still hurt us. And I'm one of the several that are against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Farmer, 31986 Blakely Drive.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Kevin Farmer and I am here in full support of the environs. I'm the first one tonight that is for it. And I think the reason why I'm so for is because I've read so in-depth about the whole situation and I've been part of it through, through its entirety. The environs overlay and all the other important tax amendments. You should not be hesitant on the legality of this tax amendment, considering this has been drafted from surrounding local governments, regulations which encompass their, their entire cities and counties. When, when you open the city of Abmaral webpage or any public announcements, hey, even, even right here, there's three blocks, water, air, and land. It's important enough for the staples of our city to put it and plaster it amongst everywhere inside the city and even the county has it too. I think it's time that we really protect what we plaster everywhere. It's, this is a great first step and as the countless hours of the staff and experts have poured into this shows the desire and passion they have for the city. Tonight is the night to pass these guidelines. The sole purpose is to protect and keep such a beautiful atmosphere preserved. I'm asking you all to vote yes, support the staff and the patrons' passion for City Lake and preserve the future for generations to come. It, it's very important to me. And Kevin has said it best, I, this is a very detailed overview of the whole, of the whole thing. I am in the county and I worry, there's a section of land that's behind me that could potentially, if they get it annexed, will, will affect them. And, and because that runs, there was a stream that runs through my property, I just want to make sure that's protected. And it will protect it if it gets annexed into the city, which that developer or whatever they want to do wants to do. So I thank you for your time and I hope you all vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. If I get this name wrong, tell me, is it Lauren King?
Lauren.
Lauren Crew.
Yeah.
Thank you for inviting me to speak tonight. Mr. Farmer, I applaud your points. I also applaud the council for their work in proposing this overlay and I'm fully in favor of it. I think that the city lake is a jewel in our county and that we need to have some guidelines in protecting the environment. If I were going to buy property and want to build a home, I would be very appreciative of the guidelines that you're proposing. And I think that you've all heard from me previously verbally and in my emails, that I charge you with protecting and being stewards of our environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate it. Will Harrington, 31682 Ameron Circle. Okay, you're going to, okay. Brandon Talbert, 1614 West Park Avenue.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brandon Talbert. I was born and raised in Abmaral. So I, I grew up on Hope Road, right around the corner. I grew up there with my grandmother. So this, this, several years ago, a piece of land on Apex Drive came open for sale and I thought, wow, what a cool place to live. It's literally right around the corner and I can remember playing there as a kid. So I purchased this land with hopes to eventually build, right? So basically, a, a very small portion of my property is inside that 1,000-foot boundary you have, but the whole property is within this amendment. So I, I'm a little confused on that, right? I feel like if the 1,000-foot boundary is a minimal section of my land, why is it applicable to all of my land? Basically, from the letter I got, I'm going to miss out on about 5.7 acres of, of being able to do whatever I shall choose, right? So it, it's a little concerning, so I am 100% opposed to it. I don't know the full ins and outs of it, but again, as a landowner, as someone who purchased property there, I just, I strongly disagree with it.
And give me the, the address again of the property, not where you, that you own, not where you live.
Right. So it's, it's actually on Apex Drive. It doesn't have a physical address.
Okay.
You can see it on the map up there. It's in the far top corner where the county actually goes. It's, I got a little bit of land in the county and most of it in the city.
How large is your property on Apex Drive?
7.6 acres.
7.6.
Yep.
And the letter you got.
Yeah.
Basically, that, that Mr. Robinson referenced earlier, that letter down at the very bottom, it's, or the front page, I think it is. Is that where it said how much you would be affected?
Yeah, it says, I would be, 1.90 acres of the undeveloped portions of the property will remain available for new structures. I feel like I purchased seven acres, I should be able to use seven acres, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Julie Curtis, 610 Hazelwood Drive.
Good evening, Council. I'm going to ditch my speech tonight because it no longer applies. I would love to address Marla Chavis's questions about the mystery postcard. North Carolina City Watch is responsible for the postcard. The PO box is in Matthews, where the man who sent the postcard lives, that's his permanent residence. The 980 phone number is a burner phone and this particular person works for a developer who is also in Monroe, who owns an 85-acre tract of land that you all are very familiar with. He has tried and failed three times to have it annexed and his plan is to scare everyone who could be affected by this into pressuring you all to vote no. So I'm here to just ask that you please vote for the majority of people who live in the city and in Stanley County, own property and businesses here and spend our tax dollars here and not bend to pressure from the minority who is not invested in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carla Wirick, 35737 City Lake Drive.
Good evening. Members of Abmaral City Council, my name is Carla Wirick and I'm here to advocate for the city staff's, for you guys to vote for the city staff's recommendation for the City Lake Environs Overlay District. I also want to second all those other amendments that they presented to you as well. This proposal developed through, this proposal was developed through extensive research and community engagement over the past three years. It aims to enhance our residential subdivisions and conservation district efforts. This initiative is essential for the safety and well-being of our citizens and the preservation of our environment. My family has four parcels that are impacted by this overlay. We've been notified, two are residential and two are commercial industrial properties. So we understand all that the city has put into this the last three years. We've experienced all the concerns that the neighbors and residents have brought up and so we're in support of this. Residents have voiced significant concerns about the impact of development on local wildlife, including deers, turtles, birds, and the protected bald eagle. Preserving these species is crucial for maintaining the ecological balance and natural beauty of our area. Despite the resoning application, community members, including biologists and wetland scientists, have expressed ongoing concerns about the potential adverse effects of such development. Moreover, I have consulted with planners and water management experts from neighboring counties, Mecklenburg, Union, Cabarrus, Lincoln, and Stanley County. Their feedback strongly supports the city of Abmaral's approach as an essential and appropriate for protecting our citizens and the environment. In conclusion, the City Lake Environs Overlay is not merely a regulatory measure, but a vital step to safeguard our community. The state of North Carolina standards are minimal. So currently, where some of these residents live, on, I think it's West Lake, there are protections there, but where we are on City Lake, there's no environmental protections at all. The state, they're minimal, so it's up to municipalities just like you, the city of Locust, Stanley County, to implement comprehensive guidelines. This overlay will ensure responsible development, maintain property values, and protect our natural resources for future generations. I urge the council to support the proposal resoning through research, community input, and expert advice. Together, we can assure Abmaral will remain a safe, beautiful, and thriving community. Thank you for your time. I also would like to ask, there were some citizens that signed the North Carolina Watch documents outside. Until we got into the foyer, they came up and asked me about the overlay and they're, they have asked that their letters be taken out of that envelope.
If, if that's the case, they can approach our city clerk.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Sandy, PO Box 707 Oprah.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Michael Sandy, I, I kind of entered this thing in the last minute. I got some phone calls Friday morning from some past customers of mine dealing with section 125, the proposed tax amendment, dealing with lots on unopened right-of-ways. There's several sections in that that concerns me and concerns these property owners about right-of-way widths would have to be increased at their expense and probably would never happen because other property owners wouldn't agree. The cost of doing paved sections on that to city standards, some of these right-of-ways would not permit that. These unopened streets, and I just took a cursory look over the weekend, there's, many of these streets were annexed by the city in the 70s and the 80s, just like they are. They were not developed. They were not open and they were not city maintained. Nobody's asking you to maintain those streets, but to put the burden on these existing lot owners, it's, it's going to stop development on those infill lots. And as a planning professional with 31 years' experience, those, in those lots close to town that maybe have been undeveloped over the time, you've annexed them, you've enjoyed the tax revenue from those lots, now you're putting the onus back onto the property owner at 100% of bringing these lots on an unopened street to city standards. And that, and I can tell you from looking at some of the street widths over in the Mill Hill, they're, they're currently city streets, but they don't meet the standard and have somebody having to go in on a vacant lot on a city street and make that lot width, make the roadway width at their cost wider, where they have ditch lines, it, it really becomes cost prohibitive. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. One of the questions I did have from one of the property owners, they did say they didn't receive any kind of notice. I do understand it is a tax amendment, but the impacts on those lots are burdensome. They need to know what they're getting involved in. They, sometimes these people own these lots 30, 40, 50 years and have plans in the future for those. They bought these individual lots. Now they're probably definitely unaffordable to build. I kind of had, I got the tax amendment Friday and I did notice the overlay district and I had some questions about that. I mentioned this about the land use plan. There's nothing mentioned in the land use plan about overlay district or preserving city lake or long lake as it is. The other areas that are recreational in the land use plan, two of those are the landfill and the sewer plant. Those are identified as open space or conservation areas in addition to the lake. Conformance to the plan, I don't believe it, that, that part conforms to the plan and I'll close it with that.
Thank you. Barbara Tissett, 42698 Barbara Tousat, 42698, Moonshine Drive, New London.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. My name is Barbara Tousat. I don't live in the city, but I spend all my money here, and I also spend a lot of time in City Lake Park. So I'm a naturalist. I love to bird. I took the community college adult education class in birding in Stanley County. It grabbed a lot of people and their interest, and I can tell you that City Lake Park is really a gem. It's one of the high points of the birding experience within that class. We visit five different locations, and City Lake Park is always special. It is special, and that's why there's a special overlay, zoning overlay. The water quality in City Lake Park is not stupendous, but it has been protected by the City Lake Park being there itself. The addition of runoff from residential areas that are not controlled with 100-foot buffer of planted material would result, when residents have lawns, they put fertilizer on it. It's like a law, I guess. And unfortunately, it's not very well regulated. Generally, they use too much, and when they spray for mosquitoes, which I really wish people wouldn't do, there are other solutions, but when they do, they usually say, "Well, I have mosquitoes, let me just use a little bit more of this." And, you know, hey, it's gonna rain in about an hour and a half, but let me get this in before that happens. And that puts pesticides in our water. Pesticides kill benthic or bottom-dwelling organisms that fish feed on, ergo, kills fish. Birds eat fish, kills birds. So there's a very complex picture there that is resolved very easily with this kind of overlay buffer. So I'm very much for what is written in Section 92111, and I hope that you will pass it for the benefit of the people who enjoy the lake, who fish in it, who kayak in it, who don't want to see it infested with more alligator weed and something else because of the kind of biological runoff that will occur from uncontrolled development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hannah Lear, are you wishing to speak? I need an address, please.
All right, thank you. I just have really one quick question. It'll probably be solved. I'm gonna use your mouse here, if I can figure out how to use it. So it says the city parcels within 1,000 feet is in green. This line right here looks to be green. Is that not green?
That's...
Right. So this, is this not green here? Is this, are these, are you saying that these properties are not gonna be affected?
Kevin, can you speak in the microphone, please?
Right there is City Lake Tax Parcel 22381. It's all, these are wetlands up on this portion right here, and the actual lake itself right here, but this is all part of this parcel, 22381. That's what...
Okay, so you're saying that none of this is being affected by this overlay?
This is the city limits right here.
Correct.
So no.
Okay, perfect. Just want that recorded, that that's not going to be affected at all. Also, what is, I'm just asking, and I would like an answer if you can give it to me, but what is the reason for this text amendment for City Lake?
I think I'd rather let staff answer that.
Yeah, Kevin needs to answer that.
Kevin, come on back up.
As we mentioned in there, are you talking about specifically this text amendment or all of them?
Yeah, just this one.
Just this one. The reason for this is because, like I said, we've had, I think, four, we've had over a dozen different hearings for these in the past three or four years, and every one of them's been contentious. Property owners out there are concerned about all these items. We still have property owners that are, you know, probably interested in developing in the future, and that is, that's the reason for it, right there. Have interest in development in the surrounding area, over a dozen meetings since '21, residents concerned, and we don't have any way to address any of those concerns with our zoning ordinance as it sits right now.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all, just as long as you promise that Amaran Circle, Westlake Hills, whatever you want to call it, is not gonna be affected, so be it.
Thank you.
It's out in the county, isn't that correct? It's out in the county.
This is, this is a public hearing. Did anyone not have an opportunity to sign up that wished to speak? Sir, come forward.
Keith Whitley, I live in Amaran Circle, and I just want to clarify something for myself. I'm gonna speak in reference to the bridge crossing 73, the property to the north. The city owns approximately one mile up that creek, up Long Creek. And what I'm understanding, what I'm hearing, is that this overlay, Environ or whatever, does not affect any properties on either side. Is that correct? Okay. If so passed now, what in the future is it gonna be grandfathered in to cover, or is it gonna have to go through the same thing? Because north of the bridge, it's all woodland and pasture and farmland. So I know that you're saying it's 100-foot buffer from the stream, from the creek. Why 1,000 foot? What's, why? 100 foot protects what? No structure?
All right. 1,000 feet is how we select the properties. Properties that are within, that touch that 1,000-foot area there, those are the properties that are within them. It doesn't say no structures. It limits the amount of a land. You could have structures, pervious, I mean, impervious materials like pavement on. The 100-foot is just around, just that blue, that blue area of the lake.
Around the lake.
That's right.
That's the only thing that's affect the 100-foot buffer. Or you're gonna affect like that 101 acres that's on the west side. It's in the city.
Yeah, we went over that. So that right there, that right there has a development agreement on it right now. If they don't develop it according to that development agreement in that set period of time, then it would affect that.
Because I understand in the past, there was 186 lot subdivision approved to go in there.
It's still approved.
Okay.
That's right. And the development does actually, that development does have, has most of what's in the overlay right now. There's a little bit extra that wouldn't be included in that, but it's actually on parts, it's two units per acre on average.
Okay.
When you average it out, and then it's, it's got, but it does have stormwater that is putting in place anyway there. They do have some buffering around the lake, probably not 100 feet in every area, it's shorter than that. I think we had 35 we required them to add on in a couple sections, so it'd be more than that.
Quarter of a mile of that property we're just referring to is covered by the wetlands. It's in that area.
Keith, give me your street address.
Yeah.
31869 Amaran Circle.
Thank you.
From here to about right here?
Uh huh.
That's where that wetland's at.
Right. That's already, they're not, they can't touch that already. They can't touch, they can't touch that portion already. That's already in their plans.
That's being on the north side, that's wetland. Actually, it's wetland all the way around here to right in there in front of the...
Right. I know that there's, I know that there's wetland, I know that there's wetland in here. I don't know how far past it extends.
And there's wetland from here coming around to right here in front of the shrine club.
Yeah, there is, there is some wetland out there.
Thank you. Last call for anyone who wanted to speak, didn't get a chance to sign up.
Ma'am, come forward.
Hello, I'm Dolores Pack, and I'm at 35945 City Lake Drive, as well as 35925 City Lake Drive. There are lots right next to each other, so it's like we have buildings on both properties. And so I am a little confused. I wanted to clarify that if you were in the county, it's not going to affect you. There's gonna be no effect, because my, my property is right, my backyard is the lake, and there is some buildings that have been there forever. I think one of them may even be historical, I'm not sure. And so I want to make sure it doesn't, that 100-foot buffer doesn't...
You're not in the city, ma'am. We don't have authority to...
Oh, okay, okay. That's what I was wondering. Okay, so actually, it looks like I'm not even in the green area there when I was looking at that. I just wanted to make sure that that's what it was. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
What was that last name, Mayor?
I didn't get her first name.
I got Dolores Pack.
Dolores Pack.
Pack, okay. Motion closed public hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, closed public hearing. Second by Councilmember Aldrich, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Counsel, I'll open the floor for...
Before, before we do anything, may I get clarification on one of the speakers?
Sure.
The person with NC City Watch, if you will come back to the podium. And if you'll give me your name again.
Christina.
Last name?
Stigley, S-T-I-C-K-L-E-Y.
S-T-I-C-K?
S-T-I-C-K-L-E-Y.
L-E-Y.
Like furniture.
And where do you, what is your address where you live?
My physical home address is 289 Museum Road, Rock Hill, South Carolina.
Museum Road, Rock Hill. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Not Monroe.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson, will you put up the consistency and the inconsistency in the text amendment statements for counsel to see?
So before, just in, before a motion goes on the table, just for discussion, just open discussion. To my fellow council members, are there questions that were asked tonight that have not been answered? I'm just going back through my notes, and it seems to me that questions that were asked, I think we've, at least I feel good about getting, having gotten answers for the public.
Not so much in regard to the overlay proposal text amendment, but I guess the general questions that they asked as to where those flyers and things of that nature originated from.
Right.
But overall, the context of what we need to make a decision on, in my opinion, have been answered.
Okay. And I think the other ones have been answered as well, though, I'm just making that.
Further questions, comments?
I have some comments, but I don't know whether to make them after a motion is made.
It's up to you.
Well, I'll go ahead then.
Okay.
I'm opposed to this amendment. I'll tell you why. I don't know how many of you have read all six pages of this material that come under this proposal. Six pages of very complicated language that seems to me to be a gross overreaction to whatever is happening that caused this thing to come about. I share whoever it was, the notion that somebody had to propose this and stand behind it and get our city people behind it. And Kevin knows that I've questioned this all along. The language is such that if you try to have a development in this area, that the language twists and turns in such a way that you will never get it approved. There will be enough things there to oppose it. To me, this, this, all this material is designed to prevent any and all development in that whole area, and I, that's why I'm opposed to it.
I think that's unfair to staff. You know, we, I think it was proposed as a result of three or four years of listening to city residents come before council and complain about flooding and things of that nature, you know? I don't think this was just created overnight.
Mr. Bramall, have you seen the other ordinances that we've brought to council? I would prefer they be simple. A lot of times, you cannot write a simple ordinance because you have to try to include every detail and try to think about every aspect of it in there. That's why those are convoluted. There's also, there's two, I mean, there's at least a half-page, if not more, of diagrams that have been placed in there to help clarify some of that, so that does add some, a little bit on to it. When I looked these up, something of this nature, I mean, I would say this is probably about average, being six pages long for what I looked up in other places with their ordinances, with their overlays.
We just differ, and I'm okay with that.
I understand simplicity, I would prefer it. Unfortunately, it's not always something you can get.
That's what I was gonna say, the, all the ordinances are that detailed, because they really have to be. And I think, I forget how many hearings Kevin mentioned that we've had over the past few years, I think I must have been here for all of them. And it seems to me like a good effort on staff's part to try to address some of these issues, to continue to allow development in that area, but also address some of the issues that the residents had. Try to protect, I mean, it's reducing density over what it is now. It's protecting buffers, increasing buffers around the lake. That's basically the gist of that one ordinance. So I'm definitely in support of it, because I think it's better than what we've been trying to manage, develop with over the past several years. It's not gonna fix it, it's not gonna eliminate flooding. When we have a hurricane, have big rains, we're gonna have flooding still, but hopefully it won't add to it, might even help. But that's just my comment.
Mayor, I'd like to place a motion on the table, that we approve ordinance 2416, proposed text amendment, which includes TA 2403 specifically outside chapters 91.10, 92.121, 92.122, 92.123, 92.125, and 92.111. With the consistency statement.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Hall to approve with consistency statement. I have a motion by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed? 6-1. Thank you. Moving on to the, moving on to the second public hearing, is a zoning map amendment 2405, request for rezoning, request to rezon 330 and 342, North Second Street, Tax Parcel 24431, from Neighborhood Business District and Residential Office to R4 Traditional Neighborhood Design District. Staff, I'll ask...
You want to give everybody a minute?
Do you want to give folks a minute?
It's up to you.
I'm letting you, letting you to load up. When you're ready, we're ready.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is Case ZMA 24-05. The applicants are Mr. David Scarborough and Mr. John Williams. The owner of the two parcels being asked to be rezoned tonight is David Scarborough. If you look at the aerial view here, the two parcels are outlined in blue. It doesn't look like two parcels, but this is the old Sinclair Gas Station. It sits on its own parcel, and then this is the old AMP building here, which sits on a parcel with most of the parking lot. Both parcels are referenced through tax record 24431. The AMP, or the old AMP building's address is 330 North Second Street, and the old Sinclair Gas Station's address is 342 North Second Street. Together, the two parcels comprise approximately 1.09 acres. Going back here, the old AMP building is zoned NBD, or Neighborhood Business District, and the old Sinclair Gas Station is zoned RO, Residential Office Reuse. The proposed or requested zoning for both parcels would be R4, which is our traditional neighborhood design, which is a conditional use district. So this, the R4 district is a little different than some of the other districts that we have in terms of rezoning. So just for example, if council approved a parcel... if council approved the parcel to be rezoned, General Highway Business District, the owner or owners of that parcel would be able to use the property for all the different uses included in that zoning district. So it's a wide variety. With the R4 being a conditional use district, the proposed use or the approved use would be tied to a development site plan. So it's kind of an approval to rezone a property for a specific development. So just to make a note, this is the applicant's statement that was provided with the original application. Some of the details have changed a little bit as we've worked with the applicants, but the intent of the statement is still there, which is the project envisions a senior living community, so think 55 and over, that's located near downtown, near healthcare, near the senior center, and also like, things like the YMCA. The applicants have stressed that it's important to them to reflect some of the area's heritage through some of the design, some of the elements, renovating, for example, the old Sinclair Gas Station. The development will offer one and two bedroom apartments, along with parking, walking paths, landscaping, lighting, perhaps some benches to create a little bit of a park-like atmosphere within the community for the residents. So once again, the old AMP building located at 330 North Second Street currently houses the Stanley Arts Guild as well as Modern Beauty Shop. The old Sinclair Gas Station has been vacant, but is currently being renovated. We'll look at the proposed use here, some of these details, what will be, the applicant will be held to in term, if council decides to approve the rezoning. So once again, we're talking about 55 plus senior living community, be multifamily residential, that will have two retail or office spaces, which will be located in the old AMP building. The new apartment building or multifamily building that will be constructed will house approximately 12 to 14 apartments. Two to four of those apartments will be located in the basement on the rear side of the apartment building and two apartments will be in the attic. And we have some renderings and things here we'll show you towards the end. On, on the backside, if only two apartments can fit sort of in the basement area, then portion of the basement will be used for tenant storage. Each apartment in the new apartment building will be roughly 30 feet by 35 feet or 1,050 square feet each. For the old existing, or the old AMP building, proposal is to have five apartments, which will be in the, sort of the rear section. That will be 20 feet by 55 feet in size, approximately 1,100 square feet. And then the front portion of the old AMP building will be reserved for the two retail or, or office type developments. It'll be approximately 2,200 square feet total. For the old Sinclair Gas Station, the proposal is for a two bedroom apartment. There are 19 tenant parking spaces proposed with an additional five retail or office parking spaces as well. And again, landscaping, walkways, lights, benches, other things to soften the environment a little bit and add something for the tenants will be installed. Water, sewer, and power are rarely available at the site. And this is a topo map we put together. This is Montgomery Avenue and this is North Second Street. So the slope of the property goes from a higher point on Montgomery Avenue and slopes down towards the old AMP building. And because of the slope, this is why the new apartment building will have, say, two floors facing Montgomery Ave, but then three floors on the backside. Here are some just recent pics looking from the site in different directions. So this is towards Montgomery Ave over here. This is looking east to the senior center. This is also looking east towards the senior center. I took this picture because it shows the dumpster and there's been sort of an idea floated around that perhaps the applicants can discuss with the senior center about maybe leasing some extra space and putting this development's dumpster next to that one, just to keep the dumpsters in one area. And it's also easier for the garbage trucks to pull off Montgomery Ave right up to the dumpsters. Just a thought. This is looking from Montgomery Ave down towards the old AMP building. Modern Beauty Shop is over here and the Arts Guild is over here. This is looking at the front of the old AMP building from North Second Street. And this is looking on, standing on Montgomery Ave, looking across North Second Street to the hall house and gardens. This is standing in front of the old AMP building, looking north to the Sinclair Gas Station. You can see some of the renovations that were started. And this is looking at the gas station from the other side, looking south. As far as the current zoning, looking at the map, comes up different, orange on your screen is the RO zoning district, or Residential Office Reuse. There's a little bit of gray up here, which is light industrial. There's some, I looked at olive green over here, which is R6 Urban Residential. And then all this in the pink is zoned NBD, or Neighborhood Business District. However, Stanley County GIS has not been updated to reflect the old Sinclair Gas Station, which sits right here in this corner. That is currently zoned RO. So that should be orange as well. As far as adjacent land uses and zoning, here's our subject parcels. So across the street you have residential and church. To the east, you have senior center. To the south, you have commercial. This is Erie Insurance. And to the west, you have the hall house and I think you have a spa and maybe a dentist over there. I'm not sure. Looking at the future land use for the 2028 land use plan, our subject properties are located here in this brown area and brown is classified as neighborhood residential. So generally, staff comments, you know, staff finds this rezoning request to be consistent with the future land use map classification of neighborhood residential. And what I want to go down here and focus kind of on the R4 district. So this is taken straight from our zoning ordinance. And this section for R4 has six items that we kind of discussed with the developer in trying to come up with the design. So I'd just like to run through a few of them quickly. Item A is the purpose of the R4 district is to provide for a greater variety of housing options. Traditionally, what you would find in downtown areas where you have higher densities, more interconnected neighborhoods, walkable or pedestrian friendly type developments. And also focusing a little bit on infill lots. Item B, when you're discussing location or where to perhaps have an R4 district, similarly, it's, it's in downtown or business district, something with a lot of service oriented businesses that can support the residents. And again, kind of pedestrian friendly. Item C is, is, you know, what type of residential developments would be permitted in an R4 district? It permits all residential types except for mobile homes and modular homes. So that would include your single family, your duplexes, triplexes, multifamily. That would all be allowed. As far as non-residential uses, again, goes back to, say, retail or office type uses, what I would term kind of less automobile intensive uses to support the residents. And also uses that they can walk to. Item D is a site design and intent of the development. These are just some of the things, again, sort of the characteristics that we're kind of aiming for. Similarly, it's a mix of housing types. It's sort of an increased density, mix of uses, which includes some form of the retail, the office, support businesses, walkability, something located next to a good street network, stuff like that. Item E is conditional approval of the plans. This section essentially says the rezoning for the R4 goes to Planning and Zoning Board like normal and they make a recommendation to council. And then council, of course, considers it and makes the final decision. So nothing real different there. But in item F, if the developer were to come back and request a change to the site plan, that's already been approved by council, there's two things that can happen. If it's, if it's a request to change something that makes the development proposal less intensive, maybe taking away the number of apartments or something of that nature, or decreasing the amount of commercial square footage, then that could be approved by staff to make it kind of easy. So less intense request. But if the developer comes back and decides to, he wants to increase the density, add 10 more apartments, increase the commercial square footage or something else of that nature, that would then go to the Planning and Zoning Board. The Planning and Zoning Board could approve that. They would have the authority to approve that. They do have the authority to approve that. But they can also defer and send a recommendation to council so council has the final approval. This is sort of just a, kind of a brief overlook of the development. Here's the old Sinclair Gas Station. This would be the new apartment building. And this would kind of be what the AMP building would be renovated. Here are your five apartments. And this in the pink here would be your proposed 2,200 feet of retail office type uses. So here are some renderings that the applicants have submitted to give you a brief understanding of what it, visual image. I would also point out the applicant does have a brief 360 degree virtual tour video that he would like to play, which kind of walks through here a little bit. But here's a visual. So this would be the new apartment building. You have two levels of apartments here. And then this would be the attic apartments, one on this side, one on this side. Here would be the renovated old Sinclair Gas Station, which would be, again, a two bedroom apartment. And then in the back here would be the renovated AMP building. You'd have your five apartments in the back and the retail office uses up Just different angles. You know, you notice the landscaping lights, some landscaping here and there. This would be behind the new apartment building where you have sort of a little common area or an area to sit down. This would probably be where some of the benches would be, some landscaping, some things of that nature. I'm just kind of going through it here. This is the backside of the new apartment building. This is where you would have potentially the additional basement apartments or storage. And here's a view of the old AMP building where your five different apartments. They would have slight dividers with parking spaces. So this is looking from North Second Avenue down towards, say, the common area down here. It's kind of just some schematics. So generally, staff believes there are merits to this request to rezoning and find it to be generally consistent with the future land use map. Also, the Planning and Zoning Board heard and recommended approval of this rezoning, the site plan, as well as the consistency statement at its June 6 meeting just a couple of weeks ago. So what I'd like to do is, is ask John, if you want to come up and we can run through the video.
This is all a permitted use and does not require a special use permit, even though it's a conditional use.
That's correct. It would be permitted use attached to the specific site plan.
All right. So this video is just going to kind of take you through the property. So there's the front of the old AMP. Our plan is to move Modern Beauty to the front.
John, would you speak?
So we're going to move Modern Beauty to the front. So we're not going to lose them as a tenant. And then we'll have an empty space in the front to rent. So these are the apartments in the back of the AMP. We hope for each one of those apartments to have their own parking space right in front of their property. There'll be 16 foot ceilings in there and we hope to retain the original tin pressed ceilings that are in that building. The house in the middle, could be pronounced incorrectly, but the Wais House once stood on this piece of property. So the front of the apartment is designed to look like that house, but doubled. So there's two of them. So we're trying to recreate a piece of property or a home that was there in the late 1800s. Depending on the slope of the land, we hope to get four apartments in the basement. The ones on the front would be like apartments you would see in brownstones. If we can't get apartments on the Montgomery Avenue, those would just be storage units in the basement. We want to do a 55 and older living community because there's not a place in Albemarle for citizens who no longer want to have a home to move unless it's an income based apartment situation. So that's where this idea was developed.
Anyone have any questions of staff or John while he's up here? This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, close the public hearing. Second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Move approves zoning map amendment 2405 with the, with the consistency statement.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hall to approve with the consistency statement. Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. I have no agenda adjustments, announced delegations or unannounced delegations. I'll move on to invited delegations. Presentation on Stanley County Comprehensive Transportation Plan, Lee Snuggs with the RR Rocky River RPO will be making the presentation.
Good evening, counsel. Thank you for taking the time to see us. We picked a busy night. Sorry. So, but this is, I'm Lee Snuggs. I'm director of Rocky River RPO. We're going to do a quick present, quick presentation on the comprehensive transportation plan for Stanley County. We have several gentlemen here from DOT, from Raleigh, and from Matthews area who will go do the presentation and ask any questions you have. So I hand it over to them.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us some time to speak on this. My name is Roger Castillo.
Will you please make sure you speak into that? Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
No, thank you.
Thank y'all for, for the time today. My name is Roger Castillo from NC DOT. With me today is also Timalope Anamashon, who will be giving the presentation later. I just want to preface the presentation a little bit by explaining that this is regarding Stanley County's Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And Stanley County does have an existing comprehensive transportation plan, albeit it is in different pieces, in different parts of, of Stanley. This, this effort is to update that plan as well as kind of combine it into one whole plan as well. So I'm gonna give it to Timalope so that he can give some presentation on kind of what a CTP is and also some public engagement opportunities that are currently going on right now to get, for the public to give feedback. Thank you.
Good evening. Do we all have this presentation?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm just going to talk to you a little bit about what a CTP is, a Comprehensive Transportation Plan. So what is a CTP? CTP is a long range transportation plan going about 25 to 30 years into the future. And it incorporates our local land use plans, which are community and statewide goals. It is developed cooperatively with local stakeholders, planning organizations, and also DOT.
Hold on one second, if you don't mind, may I? So we've got folks here that are watching this. Do we have it on here or do we not have it on there? Can any, can anybody tell us? David? No, so we don't have it on ours. We don't have it. Okay. Okay. That's, I mean, I, I'm following it fine, but I didn't know if other folks. Okay. Thank you very much. Oh, good. Yay. That's even better. Thank you. That way other folks can watch it at the same time. Thank you.
I thank you for that, yeah. So why is the CTP, CTP needed? It is mandated by North Carolina State statute that every municipality needs one to, to conform with the state statute. So what is in a CTP? There is multimodal maps, which include highway maps, bike and pair maps, and public transportation maps, as well as crash fatality, car crash fatalities, bike and pair fatalities, and just volume maps, how much cars on East Road and truck traffic maps as well. Also, there are current and future conditions of lanes and right of way and also volume and capacities. And it also includes recommendations for existing and proposed recommendations. What are the benefits of a CTP? It's coordinated with our local growth plan. It's coordinated with our local growth plan. It's a result of the RPO to submit projects for consideration for funding through NC DOT. And it's a long raised vision for facilities among local governments, RPOs, NPOs, and NC DOT. So this is a CTP timeline. And this whole timeline takes about one and a half to two years. First, we set up the CTP and then we develop the vision, which that's the step that we are in now, where we hold meetings and we also do outreach to try to get some information back on where y'all may need help or where y'all are lacking in y'all transportation system. And then when we go to a system assessment where we take y'all recommendations and we go see if there's really a problem there or if we can help in some way. And then we analyze alternatives, then we develop the plan, and then we also do another outreach program, outreach mission to get a little bit more feedback to see if every all your answers were, all your questions were answered, or all your recommendations were taken into account. So then we go to adopt the plan and then we close our CTP and get it published if everything goes well. So where does a CTP fit into the big picture? It is the first step, which we determine these, like we said, with the help of y'all and anybody else who could have some input for us. And then it goes into the North Carolina prioritization process and is given a funding score, which just helps, it just gives a ranking on what gets funded first. And then it goes into program development and then into project planning, project design, and then of course, construction maintenance and operations. So right now we have a goals and objective survey that's open until July 12, which is will consist of about four slides, which have priority ranking, which is just ordering of importance of things we, what y'all have problems within y'all communities. And then it goes to strategic ratings, which is just rating what's most important to y'all based on like public transit, bike and pad, or just congestion in certain places. And then another slide where you can identify where those certain problems are at. And then we have a wrap up slide, which is just a sensitive given, you can give us your zip code, your household income, your background. And we have a QR code for anybody in the audience who would like to participate inside the, inside the survey. We also have a link here for anybody who happens to come across this presentation, they can click on that link. Just, we need all the involvement we can get. And also with this, we have a steering committee meeting, I mean steering committee committee who, who can also give us more ideas and who's included our NC DOT, RPOs, the Rocky River RPO, local stakeholders, and also anybody in the public who has some knowledge, who would like to help. And the roles of the stake, the roles of the people in the committee are to represent stakeholders in the county, assist with public engagement, sharing unique perspectives during the planning process, review plans as it's developed, and inform others about the CTP. And then also assist with adoption and endorsement that goes along with the flyers that we're handing out to get more public involvement. And if you liked, anybody would like to join, it's open. We're here. Lee is kind of in charge of getting people more involved and getting people a part of this committee. And this is our contact information if anybody has any questions or wants to reach out to
Hey, so I'll just add a few more context for some of these slides. For this one right here, we do have flyers and thank y'all for, I saw some of them out there as well. So thank you so much for helping spread the word. The survey is online, but also we do have paper versions available as well if you'd like to fill it out. The purpose of the survey is to kind of see, you know, where the priorities lie of the locals in the county and just so that we make sure that when we do project recommendations that, you know, we're making sure that that falls in line with the community's vision. And as Timbalope stated, some of those slides there kind of help focus on that. And the identify slide especially is a good way of letting people tell us kind of where are some areas that we need to focus on and where we, or we need to kind of look into a little bit closer. And as for the wrap up slide, that is just kind of a way for us to make sure that we're reaching out to as many people as possible. It is an optional slide. The whole survey is optional, but this one especially. One good thing about this wrap up slide though, as well, is there is a place to put in your email if you would like. And one thing that we do is, as Timbalope said, we do public engagement again later on in the process. And this is one of the first, the first people that get notified are the people that put in the email. We'll still do public outreach and go out to the communities to make sure. But this is just a quick and easy way of making sure that you're well informed of this process as well. And then just a little bit on the CTP in general, it is a long range vision plan. Just because the recommendation's there does not mean it is going to happen. It is just kind of a way to kind of lay out a blueprint of where you would like the county to be heading and kind of to help address some of those transportation problems. And Timbalope did mention the CTP steering committee. We do meet the first Tuesday of each month. We will be skipping the Fourth of July month though. So our next meeting is in August. And basically what we do at those is kind of go over a lot of the maps and the data that we gather. And we'll also be looking at the survey results at that meeting as well, just to kind of see where we can help address some of those concerns. And as Timbalope said, we do, we are seeing if anyone would be interested to also join. We're going to different municipalities around the county to see, make sure that everyone's voice is kind of included. And we're looking for, seeing if there's someone that would like to be a stakeholder for different aspects of the plan. So it doesn't necessarily always have to be like a council member or things like that. It can be like a bike advocate, you know, someone that advocates for greenways, someone that is advocates for public transportation, even, you know, like elderly inaccessibility. So we are looking for different types of people like that as well. So please reach out to either myself, Timbalope, or Lee here. And all our contacts are on the website or the presentation as well. But if you'd like a flyer, I'll leave these as well. So if you have any questions for us as well.
Council, do you have any questions?
Does this involve roads, streets, public transportation? What is the general, what are the scope of this thing?
Sure. So we do take a look at all the roads within Stanley County. We do kind of identify kind of some of those key connectors or roads that have a lot of traffic volume, but also where there might be a lot of crashes and things like that. And of course, if we do see the public mentioning certain areas to take a look at, we do look at those as well. Once we identify an issue or the location, then we see maybe what are some project recommendations that can help fix that. And that is the, kind of the purpose of the plan is to identify issues more than anything.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I've been going to some of the meetings since I'm on RPO. Kevin has been to some. So he's providing information on planning and zoning, land use planning, and that kind of stuff. One of the first things, one of the first meetings that we went to, they had all these maps laid out. So Ronnie came to one that they did with CRC. So some of the things we did was point out, like we wanted to make sure they had our business part on there and were aware of it, other transportation issues. But I would encourage you all to go to, maybe Christine can get the email link out or leave, somebody could send it out to take the survey.
It's on there. It was on here.
Yeah, it's in your pocket. So if, and it's on your website, I guess. I don't know. Anyway, I took it initially, I think there were some hiccups with it, some bugs, but I took it a couple of weeks ago and it seemed to work fine. So it'd be a good opportunity to go in and rate some of your priorities. So they also will go out and do the public outreach. For example, at City Lake Park for Truck Friday, those kind of, any kinds of gatherings like that, downtown festivals. I understand y'all would like to know about those so you could possibly have someone there like we did with the stormwater thing. So.
And as he did mention, the, we do have those meetings and there is a virtual option. So if you don't want to drive over there, but we do encourage, like you mentioned, there's a lot, sometimes we have a lot of maps and things like that. We do encourage in person just because it's a lot easier to get feedback that way as well. But, you know, just kind of knowing and being informed is better than not going at all. So we do encourage that.
And we've been sharing on our social media page. So anybody that needs to find it can look at our social media page.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I was going to add real quick. A lot of times folks talk about there's not, nobody's listening. Well, this is, we're definitely looking for everyone's input and we'd love to have yours as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you, gentlemen. Minnesota reports 9A, the departmental report, turn your agenda question.
Two comments. And I don't have a page in them. I just pulled them out. Tomorrow is the, a follow up meeting with the homeless meeting, the homeless group, the quarterly meeting. And I know that within the body of the police department report, is the chief here? JT's here. Because it is part of this report, I mean, it's, it's part of what's been made public through the, through the departmental reports. I'd love it if the chief, and if the chief's not here, JT or somebody from the police department can be here tomorrow morning to go over what they've done. Because in here, I think if you look at it, it says during the month of May, I guess DBD, I don't know what that is. I think it's down, that's what I thought it was. But, you know, for me, I wasn't sure, but I thought that's what that meant. I think that that probably needs to be brought out tomorrow. So I'd like for that to come out tomorrow, particularly since it's in this report. There was some comments about the traffic. The speeding trailer has been parked somewhere in a couple of, on Hinson Street. But I didn't see any comment about Anderson Road. Have you got any update on what's gone on over in that area? Okay. The second follow up question I have is, goes back to finance. And this is a end of, financial report is the end of May, which should be 11 months. And if you do the math, it should be 91% expenditure or 91% revenues. And we talked with the budget that just passed two weeks ago about the PAL bill money is supposed to be increasing. And we banked on that with that budget that passed. And I may be ignorant, but numbers sometimes can lie and sometimes don't lie. But it looks like the current fiscal year budget for PAL bill is 1.13 million dollars. And as of year to date, which would have been 531 at the end of nine months, we had only gotten 641, so about half of it. Expenditures was just about, you know, 900,000. So we had expended about 200 more, 250 more. I guess my question is, are we still expecting that? Because I know that PAL bill distribution, and I'm not sure if is our...
Finance director is not here tonight.
Okay. So I can't ever see who's around or not. I just think that, that's what I thought. Well, and I just, and I know that traditionally there had been two distributions or two dispersments. But it looks like to me that the state with the PAL bill, that the dispersments would not wait till the end of the fiscal year. So that's got me concerned if we're talking about half a million dollars that we've not yet received. And I just saw this this afternoon when I was looking through it to find these numbers. But that discrepancy, if we're already going to start off a little bit in the hole, I think we need to figure out. And as you're coming up, I've just got the fin, and you can, I mean, you can borrow this. Here you go. No, 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 no. No, if you look at it, I've got it, I've got it circled where you see it's, budget's like 1.1 million and we've gotten seven, 698 or something.
Okay. So right off the top of my head, what I think that would be is we did a transfer from last year's budgets because we didn't use that money for the paving project.
Okay.
So that's why you're probably seeing a double in the revenue side to where what, or the expense, is that right?
No, 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 no.
What we've budgeted compared to what the revenues are.
Okay.
Our revenues are around 600 and some odd thousand a year.
Okay.
So on the budget side, you see that double mark because the FY of 20...
You brought it over.
23, we brought it over.
But then...
I think that's probably what...
And that may be it, but again, I'll take that back so I can ask my question. But again, I think if we, if we're looking at, this is a true picture of what's going on, then we should have already transferred that money and made that part of the revenue to date, or at least done a transfer so it doesn't look like we are over expending and not receiving. So, and that's the first time that I've, that this has jumped out in front of me, or I'd have brought it out before. But that just, that jumped. So thanks and whoever can get me an answer on that.
We can get that for you.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. 10A, consider road closures for the Forest Hills July 4 parade from 10:30 AM to 1:30 PM on July the 4th. 10B, consider road closure for the Community Church Vacation Bible School. Mount Zion Church is asking to cause a small part of Gibson Street right there on the hill beside the church on the June 21st from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. You have an annual report of our surplus sales. 10D, resolution 2418 is to approve salary schedule for fiscal year 2425. 10E is resolution 2419 solid waste collection fee for fiscal year 2425. 10F is resolution 2420 establishing annual street assessment rates for fiscal year 2425. And 10G is ordinance 2418 amending the American Rescue Plan special revenue that will be appropriating the investment earnings into the general fund. And councilor member, we will be doing some budget amendments soon as we get the quotes in for several projects in our next fiscal year.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett. Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion?
Just a comment that within the, that within the application of the Forest Hills, just, this is a clerical thing, within the application, if you look at the page, one at the bottom of it, it says date of closure, start time 9:30 to 1:30. That's at the very bottom of it. You go at the top that it begins, I guess the parade begins at 10:30. So it may be if the start time, we're children or exaggerate, or you know, barricading, that kind of thing, starts at 9:30, I think that's what we need to do is it needs...
Mr. Bramlett, will you mean your motion at 9:30 AM?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And second, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to unfinished business, capital improvement plan program review. Ms. Rhodes?
So this is a follow up on the plan that was submitted to council in the fall at the beginning of the budget working season. And also we revisited the capital improvement plan in January of this year. Just a reminder, these, the capital improvement plan consists of 60 projects across the various departments that were submitted by the department heads to, to ensure that their departments can continue to function. These are big ticket items. That's what a capital project is. And the plan is the first in a number of years. This would be the first year of a five year plan. As you also recall, in the upcoming budget, there are a number of capital projects to kick off the first year. And this is a, you know, a partner to the budget this year. Each year it would be, the plan would be reviewed by council and it would be updated by staff. And council would of course determine what projects would go in the upcoming year's budget. The plan not only lists the projects by year that they would be funded, but also lists funding mechanisms for the various projects. funding mechanisms for the various projects.
Council, have any questions?
Just about priority ranking, I guess I go back to my comments that I made, I don't know, either in January or November, those priority rankings are by department head, is that correct?
That is, that is correct. The projects that, and a good example is on page five, that list all of the projects in the general fund, and I can bring that up.
I've got it, too. Might be better there, so it's larger.
Okay. So, a good example is in the general fund there, those are all of the projects for the departments in the general fund, and the actual way that they are spread out over a five-year period was developed by the Finance Director and the, and the interim city manager. These are not written in stone, as I mentioned, each year, in the fall, when the budget process kicks off, council and the department heads would, would work on these to determine which ones are prioritized for that upcoming budget cycle, so.
And our, our improvement, our street improvement is not, is, do I, I'm missing, I'm not seeing that on here at all, is that correct?
Right. The street improvement plan is a separate item, it's not included in the CIP, it is a, it's a separate funding category.
Further questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion to adopt the capital improvement plan. Motion by Councilmember McGry, second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. 12A, appointments to the various boards, I'm gonna go through them one at a time. Convention and Visitors Bureau, reappoint Martha Hughes and appoint Lindsay Almond, our Economic Development Director. Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, reappoint Brian Sharp, reappoint Sean Baldwin, Jerry Barrier, and Ron Loughlin. Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Hunt, further discussion?
Just a question, I can't remember, and I saw, she's not in here now, but does anybody know if that, at one point in time, these were on there by districts? Are they, are they still on there by districts? So, number five, is that a district that we're seeking, or is that an at-large?
I'm gonna clarify that with her, because actually, I had a call to her today, and we kept missing each other.
Okay.
So I wanna verify that, but undermined her saying that's the one board that is district, so I wanna confirm that.
Okay.
I believe that's correct.
Okay, and I, I just knew, it used to be, and I couldn't remember, and I couldn't remember if all of them were districts, or if we had any at-large.
So when it says, under Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the 1 through 5, that is not on that one district specific, so 1, Brian Sharp, is not necessarily District 1.
Right, 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 right.
But I will give you, I will make sure that you guys have a roster that specifically says what district is appropriate.
Very good, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Planning and zoning board, Kent Harkey's term is ending, motion to, or moving to appoint Tanner Denton from the alternate to the regular member, and Michelle Cummings has resigned, and we want to move Robert McIntyre from the alternate to the regular member, and we also have a new application for Leslie Snuggs Phillips that would take one of the alternate positions.
So, I'm, I mean, I've proved every bit of this, I though, however, want us to continue when we're appointing folks to be able to see those applications, number one, and to be able to see the attendance record of people, okay?
I think that was the one that I didn't realize that had been sent out, so I have not seen that one, but we have it tonight.
So, and, and then I asked about that one application, 'cause I knew she had filed it, so I think we just got to whatever it is, we've gotta work on our procedure, so that we know what their, what their attendance record is, and, I mean, because we are the ones, you know, I know who you all want, okay, but I think we've got to go back to folks that wanna be on there, and again, we've not seen, some of us knew that we had, Leslie had filed, and I want to put her on there, but other folks don't even know who she is or anything else about her, 'cause we don't have the application.
Yeah, it's not our, our decision, but I'd, I'd like the opportunity to look at it, and we typically try to make recommendations to y'all, too, whenever we get a chance to.
Well, I'm gonna move that we do, Kent Harkey, appoint Tanner in that, in that one, and I'm gonna move that we appoint Robert McIntyre in that regular member, and move that we appoint an alternate with Leslie Snuggs Phillips on that one, but, but moving forward, I want us to be able to see them.
We have one other that we're waiting to get an application in, so we're trying to fill that second alternate position as well, hopefully-
Actually, there'll be, there'll be two free ones then.
Yeah, it's a pretty big turnover.
Have a motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Tree Commission, we have one reappointment of Elaine Nelson, and we have two vacancies that we need applications for.
So move to reappoint.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to reappoint Elaine Nelson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hunt, further discussion?
Just keep in mind, I think this is one of the few committees that we have, that you do not have to leave within the City of Albemarle.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Historic Resource Commission, reappoint Razine Brown, and they have two vacancies there that we need applications for.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Bramlett, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Noon 12B, request permission to conduct a fireworks display, the Wampus Cats are making this request, I guess my first question is, have they contacted the fire marshal?
Yes, they have, Your Honor. They have spent a great deal of time with the fire marshal, and from their, from the Wampus Cats, I will say this publicly, Robert has just been wonderful about spending time with them in the last, in a quick turnaround, so thank you very much, that came as quickly as last night.
So, late last week, we were contacted about this fireworks display, and as of this afternoon, we found out from the Office State Fire Marshal, that we were needing one more step, and it's very small, it's gonna be taken care of in the morning. The Board of Commissioners, since it's been so long, that, and we don't even know if there's fireworks ever been set off, and I don't know of any since, I've been employed for 29 years.
In Albemarle.
Yeah, so-
Yes, they have.
If they, if they have, I was not a part of that, no part of administration on that. So, the Board of Commissioners, by general statute, have to give the city permission to grant this fireworks display, so in the morning, they are, there's a commissioners' meeting that is going to, they're gonna vote on it, and hopefully approve it. So what we're gonna, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna turn it over to the fire marshal to tell you the process in which this had, this come about, because it's, it's gonna come about again, I'm, I'm sure that the Wampus Cats are gonna do this again, and it's probably gonna lead to other fireworks displays, but in the morning, this will be voted on by the commissioners, and what we're gonna ask you to do tonight, after you hear from the fire marshal, is to approve contingent on the Board of Commissioners approving in the morning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. So, as Chief Kendall stated last, mid-last week, get a phone call from the power technics wanting to know about shooting fireworks, and I went, when? And he said, on the 3rd, and I looked at the calendar, hmm. So, but what I did, I told him what he needed to have, I've actually met with him on site, me and him went down there, found a place to do it, little stuff about the fire codes, you have to have proof of insurance, liability, insurance, all of your sales sizes, and basically, for every inch of shell, you gotta have 70 feet of clearance. So, when he was telling me where they proposed to do it, I said, it ain't gonna work there, but I do have a place that it will. So, one thing we need to also get y'all to approve tonight, that they can do it on the old Whiskassett Mill Company property that the city owns, that's the site for a fallout area. I think, Mr. Mayor, do you have a site plan?
I think I emailed one, 'cause I'm not sure.
Okay. So basically, I got one, if y'all'd like to see it, but-
I've got it right here, I've got one right here, too.
So basically, what this consists of is, basically, y'all approve it, I'll set forth with him, do the, I'll have to write the permit for it, once he meets all requirements, he's pretty much met all the requirements until the day of, so I can go and inspect the shoot. It will be approximately 9:30 up till 11, 'cause I do believe we have a noise ordinance at 11 inside the city, is that correct?
It is.
So, the game should be over around 9:30, that's when we're gonna shoot the fireworks, so somewhere in that proximity would be the time of fireworks after the show.
Okay, but it's not gonna be from 9:30 to 11?
No, 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 no.
It's gonna be a five-minute show.
I was gonna say, wow.
Somebody got money. Yeah, it's gonna be, they're saying a five-minute show, it's probably gonna be five to 10 minutes, in reality.
You've worked with our attorney for all the liability forms, correct?
They're, all that's covered under the fire code. As a fallout, will all be on the Whiskassett property? Yes, we will have a fire engine there, with two fire personnel there.
I previewed the form, and the City of Albemarle is an additional insured on them, so we're good to go.
Thank you.
So, may I, yeah, so last week, and I, I think it was last Monday, the general manager and the owner, I was at a ballgame, and they mentioned it to me, and so that's how we got it started, and just for my coun, my folks' own council, as soon as they mentioned it to me, I sent it to the interim city manager and said, here it is, and I made the comment to him, to, to you, Darren, I think, or, and I don't know who else I copied, may have even copied, read originally, that I knew there was some caveat about the commissioners, 'cause I remember when I was a commissioner, we had to approve something for somebody else, and it was just, went back in the brain, and I will tell you that they have sent, they've sent me the information as well as, as Darren, that we were, and Darren, I just, Darren has done well with it, Robert, you've just been great, and that's what they've said to me, even last night, the owner was there, and the guy that's shooting them, just for your, everybody's information, is from Winston, somewhere up there, and like, I can't, maybe Wilkesboro, maybe?
North Wilkesboro.
North Wilkesboro.
And he, I have all his plans here.
Right.
He sent me a synopsis, and I've done fireworks the last 20 years, he, it's pretty spot-on.
Well, and-
May I move approval of fireworks display?
Contingent on-
On approval tomorrow.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett, second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
So that's approval for them to shoot it off from that location, too, correct?
You need a motion to, Mr. Mayor, to do it on our property, or is that covered?
That was included, was it not?
That was included, all right, okay, very good.
Good job, guys.
I wanna make sure, that when we go to the commissioners, this is gonna be for this particular one, and then we're gonna go back to the commissioners to do an overall resolution, so we don't have to do this anymore.
Sure.
Good deal.
That's fine, that's fine.
I understand, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Coming around the table, I'm gonna start by just saying thank you to the county commissioners. We all know that we have no authority over the needle exchange program, and they have figured out a way to try to help us with the needle exchange program through some money that they normally provide to that organization, and hopefully that if, if all plans do occur, the needle program will be stopping at the end of this, end of June, we hope. Mr. Rhodes?
Just a reminder, the Wampus Cats baseball team will be playing at Montgomery Park this week at 7 o'clock, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday nights.
Looking forward, looking forward to seeing everybody Saturday at the ribbon cutting for Courthouse Plaza, as well as enjoying the summer festival.
Ms. Hall?
Back to the ribbon cutting, I'm glad it's finally here, I'm glad it's here, I did have someone ask me, and I told them I did not know the answer, so here it is, they'd been down, and they didn't see a stage, what did we decide about a stage down there? I think we did, it was in, it was in the original plan that we had a stage, and then we talked about a mobile stage, but if somebody can talk about that, and while somebody is coming there, are we doing art, are we still doing some local art down there, and has there been some idea of doing it on the side of the belt building? Again, all these were old ideas that were a while back, and I can't remember what was, you know, decided.
Sure, I'll speak to the stage, I remember that that was a concept at one point in time, the plans that were approved and given by McAdams, and also set out for bid, did not include a stage on these plans, it was a projector screen, which you'll see the brick piers and the steel columns at the very back of the, of the alley.
Right.
So that has the capability of having a projector screen on it, you can also hang banners from it, things of that nature, so I also believe at one point in time, maybe some of my other counterparts can confirm that the stage was also thought about to be a mobile stage.
Right.
Something that could be moved in and out of the alley as needed, so not a permanent structure.
Right, and I, I just knew I had not seen or heard anything from it until I've been down there, and then I noticed it wasn't there, so.
Yeah, I, I've been removed from it from a little bit, but that was something that Nikki was looking into, that she did, she did price that out.
Who did, who was?
Nikki.
Okay.
Back when she was involved in the project, I remember we looked at it, and it was a, it was a single, it was a standalone purchase, it was its own thing that could be pulled in there and pulled out afterwards, don't remember the price of it, though.
Okay.
I think that was kinda separate from everything else.
Okay.
Regarding the art, the mural is still on the table, if you will, there's some funding remaining from the project that we wanna see, you know, perhaps we do a call for artists, or something like that, in, with, involving the building owner, and then perhaps a committee, you know, we're gonna explore that this next fiscal year. There will also be an art walk going on that day along the sides, just involving the Stanley County Arts Guild, and just have some artists along, in the area to promote, you know, the feeling that we want the space to imbue.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Did you have any other questions?
What other publicity have we generated?
It, it's been social media, and I think there was a-
Press release?
There was a press release.
Has the press release gone out yet?
David? Yes.
It has.
I just had somebody ask the questions, and I haven't seen anything in the newspaper.
Sure. Okay. Okay, it's, it's been published, and it's been sent to them, so.
Thank you.
Okay, yes.
And the last thing is, is that Friday, leading into Saturday, is Make Music Day in the county and in city of Albemarle, and there are gonna be many, many opportunities at many establishments and many areas for music to be made, and one of those, commenting on what Darren just said about the Wampus Cats, I hope folks will go, one of the things they're gonna do is that they're gonna have some music in the middle of one of the Wampus games, Cats games, there has been local talented individuals bringing, opening the Wampus Cats games since the very beginning, singing the National Anthem, and there's been some folks that are going to use instruments and do an instrumentalist, so just a lot of stuff going on down there, and I hope that folks will come and take part in that, to see what's going on. From now on, moving forward, every game is at 7 o'clock, doors opening at 6.
Ms. Whitley?
Yes, sir, I'm good.
Mr. Dry?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes, sir.
I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session per certain general statute 143, 318A, 5 and 6, for real estate and personnel. Motion by Councilmember Dry?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.